This is Studio 809 Podcasts, informing, connecting, and empowering the residents of the Pike's Peak Region.
Binlo Season Two is sponsored by Blackpackers, economic equity in outdoor education and recreation. This is Badly Needed and Long Overdue, a controversial podcast about Colorado Springs. It's controversial because it makes sense. I'm your host, Nick Raven. I am standing right now on a pedestrian bridge that I used to walk to and from over a day on my transit to Dougherty High School, which is right behind me. So yeah, every day, rain, snow, hail, sunny, whatever, I'd be using this bridge. And when I finally worked up the courage by senior year to skip out on assemblies, not class, I didn't skip out on class, but assemblies, because assemblies are useless, honestly, for the most part. Friends and I would come back here and hide out. And I remember one time there was a field trip coming through and they had a student in a wheelchair and we actually, us skipping kids, went and helped them out. There used to be bollards. Actually, there's a couple right here. I don't want to move out of camera here. You can't, I mean, obviously if you're listening, you can't see anyway, but there used to be some on both sides, if I recall correctly. So anyway, I'm here because in the soapbox, after the conversation that we have in this episode with Colorado Springs Council member Kim Gold, I want to talk about speed zones, or school zones, I should say. Speed zones, schools are amazing, but they'll be the same thing. But I want to talk about those in the soapbox. This felt like a very good fitting choice. My conversation with Kim is amazing. It was funny as hell. She gives insights on what it was like to run for office and then what the demands of the office are and the feedback she gets and stuff like that. And then kind of her aspirations as a junior member of city council are being in this office. So we have a great conversation. I know you're gonna love it. We talk about ice cream. How can we not? So let's go ahead and pay the bills and then afterwards stick around for the soapbox and talk about school zones, because those are a huge deal, not just here in Colorado Springs, but kind of everywhere that there are cars. And I assure you, it won't boil down to a cars bad rant, but there will be some of that in here. All right, let's get out of here. The Anthr Review. Do you like video games? What about multi-hour deep dives into how video games work? Of course you do. It's time you come check out what 22,000 other subscribers have already discovered. A whole bunch of delicious content about mechanics, immersive sims, action games, open world stuff, and why we play and enjoy games in video essays you can cook dinner to. Check it out at youtube.com/anthrreview. And be sure to check out my newest review for Day SX: Mankind Divided, a revisit of the classic immersive sim, coming out soon. If you'd like to place an ad on Binlo, send an email to badlyneededpodcast@gmail.com and get your business, campaign, or message prominently featured on this beautiful glittering podcast. Now, onto the conversation. Kim, welcome to the show. What's your word of the year?
Courage.
Why is it courage?
Because I was silly enough to run for office.
You moved here, you're 2021.
I did.
So you weren't here when Chapel Hills tore down the old theater and put up the big D. The big, it's, it's literally called the big D. I moved back and it was called the big D and it's DDDD. No, I think it's just three Ds. Cause there was, they're trying to capitalize on 3D.
Oh.
Yeah. You didn't know that?
No.
No, that's how it started. So you weren't here for that.
No.
But those movie theaters back then were very much old school. But when they started doing the recliners, I don't know when they started really doing that.
I'm thankful that they do that.
Why?
Because then I can relax and not sit awkwardly at movie theaters.
Do you push, do you go, you, do you go all the, like, I, not all the way back, but definitely you like most of the way back.
Most of the way, yeah.
Yeah. Do you order food?
No.
Roadhouse does that.
I can't. I did it one time.
Uh huh.
And I just felt really uncomfortable with not being able to clearly see my food and eat at the same time.
You take, you take your plate and you go, well, luck be with God and let's see how this happens.
No, I need to see what I'm eating.
Why?
Cause I'm human?
Weird. So anyway, you're courageous because you ran for office, but not courageous enough to
No, I'm, I'm
order food in the dark.
No, no, no. I'm silly for running for office. No, no, no.
No, you're courageous.
And in order to be silly, you have to have some level of courage. It might be stupid courageousness. Courageousness.
Are you almost like karate? No, you don't need that.
Yeah, that's so courage was my word. You know, I just really, I wanted to do scary things.
Scary. So why, why, why this scary thing aside, other than, you know, sticking your hand in like an old scary house where spiders are like?
I'm not that courageous.
Okay.
I did though, I did though, do a tour of one of our utilities plants here recently.
Yeah.
And they have a caretaker home and the caretaker home has a really creepy basement. And I did go all the way into the basement.
That was you testing your limits.
I was. I'm still here. I mean, is it me or is it like?
Are you a hologram?
I could be possessed by the former caretaker. I don't know.
Binlo holographic stickers available everywhere. I'm just kidding. They're not available anywhere, just to special guests and that. Oh, is it in there? Oh, let me get this. Was it in the, was it in the last, okay.
Um.
So you were, you went to, hang on. Colorado Springs Utilities is old and it's ours. And so you have, what have you learned about Colorado Springs Utilities that you hadn't known before you took office and became part of the board of Colorado Springs Utilities?
I just have inappropriate things to say.
My bill.
I do, I, you know, we are, we are one of few municipalities that have a four service provider, which is pretty cool.
What's, what's that?
Gas, water, wastewater, and electric.
Oh, good.
But.
But soon the internet.
But, but not, but not trash, which is interesting, right? That's, that's not.
Maybe we should.
Well, it probably never will happen. They've tried looking into it several times.
Why?
Uh, land, space, you know, things got a pencil.
We almost did Carmen Line. We could have annexed 1,800 acres right next to Shreve for garbage.
And you think, yeah, no, I don't know. That's not a good look. That's not a good look. That's not a good look.
So, but, okay, so four star, so it's
Four service provider.
It's publicly owned.
Publicly owned.
Which is a big deal, especially these days, like PG&E with the fires over the past decade and stuff like that. We're talking Excel with their rates up in Denver, Pueblo. Um, and then the county just shot down the transmission line that was supposed to go through the, now, obviously that's not Colorado Springs. They did unanimously.
Oh.
Yeah, because they need to connect.
I need to keep up with the county.
Well.
Keeping up with the county. That should be like a podcast.
Just a podcast art of a straw hat. And like, hey, yo, El Paso County.
Look, you gotta embrace that cowboy spirit.
Yeah. We voted no on everything. Good night, everybody. So, no, but you've gotten a lot of perspectives. I'm sure field trips and stuff like that, that you've gone out and see some of these facilities that are big and or old and or getting updated.
Yep.
That are keeping, because people are always skeptical. They always like, my rates are going up, cause city council doesn't know a single rate hike they didn't like, you know, like that kind of stuff. There are people who are skeptical, but they don't understand what the alternative is.
Yeah, we, we are really privileged to have, and I, you know, of course, everybody's gonna like, of course you say that, you said on the board, but
Yeah.
But the more I learn, I'm like, wow, I can't believe the lights still turn on.
I'm glad they do.
Yeah, we do a great job. We really do a great job. And I, I think the most interesting tour that I've done so far, outside of being possessed by the caretaker spirit tour.
Did they eventually leave?
Well, I don't know. We'll find out. It's maybe the Las Vegas tour. And I always give the CEO of utilities a hard time because he said he was gonna take me to Vegas and that was just not the Vegas.
That was not the Vegas you're going.
Going for.
Concrete coyote in that right down there.
Right, right. But you know, um.
I'm moving my water bottle. That's my, you public.
Excuse my, my language here, but you go to that, you go to that tour and you're like, we are literally all in this shit together.
We, yeah.
Because it, all of our stuff is literally together. And I just think it's very poetic.
This is how it all comes together.
It all comes together. But that was really enlightening. So inappropriate. See, this is why, this is why you shouldn't have young people on council.
I know.
Very inappropriate.
Screw around.
You can't take anything serious.
We have so much to talk about. Um, how are you?
My other word of the year. With courage comes fatigue. So, um, you know, I, I am tired, but I'm also in this season where I'm tired, but I'm having fun.
Good. Not tired and then I feel exhausted and why is the world this way?
I mean, some days, yes. Yes. Some days, some days it feels really heavy. And then there's some days where you're like, wow, I have faith in our systems. I have faith that we are, we are improving our systems. That's not every day, but I, I think to lose hope is a sad place to be. But
Right.
Um, yeah. So I'm tired. I'm having fun. I'm learning a lot. I'm learning too much. I'm still being courageous, I think. I'm here talking to you, so that is pretty courageous.
This is, you accidentally stumbled in here and the microphones were on and let's go.
Right, right. I just got lost.
Want to talk about Colorado Springs? Yeah, I live here. You know, it's pretty dope.
I live here too.
Yeah. It's for, it, it's when they don't live here that it gets weird. And they should pay more in LART taxes, but that's a whole other matter.
That's a, yeah.
That's a, so why did you decide? Here's the thing. People don't like city council, as I understand it. I know them, the city council doesn't have like polling or any, like no one, cause you gotta pay money to do that stuff.
We do polling, actually.
Okay, what's the approval rating? Tell me. And it's, it's a hundred percent, isn't it?
It is.
Is a hundred percent, everybody loves city council?
We do polling and the numbers are low.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you said it, because I could say it, but then I don't have polling.
Yeah, the numbers are low. But why do you say people don't like city council?
I can read all the news comments on Facebook. I can, just as easily as you. I think, I would say broadly and I'm the idea that this is the public facing government, there's nine of you guys.
Right.
You're responsible for whatever responsible, which seems very confusing in the year since the strong mayor change happened, which I know is confusing even for city council. It's like, I still have potholes. Like, what are you guys doing all day? You're, this is a volunteer position. You guys may be put in like 10 hours. You're not going out there with the shovels and the, and the hard hats and being like, I'm doing it, I'm doing my part, like.
Have you seen me in a hard hat? I look terrible.
I actually don't think I have. I want to say there has to be some press photo of you somewhere in a hard hat. Have you, have you had a shovel? It's because it's the hard hat and the shovel.
I haven't done the shovel yet. I'm not that politician-y yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
That's a mayor thing.
But I think, I don't know, there might be a groundbreaking and maybe I can like really earn my stripes and do the hard hat shovel picture.
Hmm. What would you ground break on? It's like someone, it's like, all right, we've got five ground breakings this week, which, which you guys, one's, one's a knife palace for some reason. The other is an ice cream shop. This one is, uh, the launchpad two. It's the launchpad, but twice as much.
I would definitely.
One's a highway.
The ice cream shop.
Okay.
Ice cream is my kryptonite.
Is it? What's your favorite?
All of them.
Really? Even the mango twist?
Yes. I love, I love, I don't, I mean, as evidenced by my fluffiness.
No.
There's not an ice cream I don't like.
So you like all of them?
I like all of them.
Okay. So, so, all right, Josh and John's or Nick and Dave's are gonna have an ice cream parlor open up. And Kim's gonna be like, all right, I've got 20 minutes. Let's go. Snap, snap.
No, no, no. I'm staying there for longer than 20 minutes.
I heard there would be scoops.
Yeah. I'm staying, I am staying there. I don't get paid enough. So if I'm gonna be able to do the photo op with a shovel of ice cream and a hard hat.
Oh, my God. Have you, have you seen Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure?
A thousand years ago.
Ziggy piggy ziggy. No, okay. So they break, so they're, so the, um, Bill's brother, they have to keep tabs on Napoleon because they've prodded him back through time for a history project. And so they bring him to an ice cream parlor. And so you have Napoleon and they bring him the biggest friggin' ice cream scoop. Now you have to go watch it again.
See, look, this is, so are you gonna coordinate this grand opening with my hard hat and my shovel of ice cream?
Yeah, that's, so that was singing like a kiddie pool full of, hopefully hasn't been out too long. We don't want spoilage. I know bacteria gets in there. I'm sure that's a public utility. That's a fifth star. His ice cream safety.
Yeah.
Is out there. All right. It's been out for three minutes. We really need to get the ceremony going. I want to thank you guys for being here at Nick and Dave's.
Josh and John's.
Whatever. Um, ice cream parlor. Um, ice cream is so fundamental and you're like, fuck, I just want to get I just really want to get into this ice cream.
Did you know that Thomas Jefferson, I believe, is credited with the ice cream recipe?
What?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. You have, fact check that, because I could be lying.
Okay.
No, the reason why I say that is because I recently went to Mount Rushmore and there's an ice cream parlor up there. And that was one of the like fun facts.
What? That? The fact that you said that there's an ice cream parlor at Mount Rushmore is almost more fun than the fact that you said that Thomas Jefferson invented the ice cream. The modern ice cream.
Yeah.
Is that why the founding father wanted us all to be fat and round?
Well.
For us to roll across the country.
His vision has been actualized. I am living proof.
But you're from Korea in part.
I know, but that American side is strong.
Anyway, we have a podcast that we're doing. Um, so you wanted to run for city council for some reason. And it wasn't just big, now, I do know that when we open an ice cream shop, you will be there. But, um, or you will volunteer the loudest first. Hopefully you're there when they give those orders out. But why did you decide to run for city council? Of all the jobs that are thankless and pay nothing and why, Kim?
You know, okay, the last time I was in this room, I was recording Pike's Peak Women with former mayor Mary Lou Makepeace.
The first woman mayor.
Yes, the first and only.
Yeah.
Woman mayor.
And so far.
And we talked about politics. And I said with my whole chest, I was not running for city council.
Good. Good call. All right.
And I said.
And you still haven't.
And I, I said, well, actually, I think I said something along the lines of, I would love to run for city council because I think it has some of the biggest impact in your city, but I simply could not make the math work with the salary.
No, I see that among us. It's like, I'm so glad that, say, Mariah ran or Chauncey ran and all them. And it's like, okay, you know, sixty-two fifty a year. It's a stipend.
Right.
It is, and that is from the, because all cities kind of start out when you're small, it's a volunteer thing, because there's 20 minutes of work. You know, you're opening the ice cream parlor and then you're out of there in your private jet. But as the city grows, it becomes recognized that, hey, we have these professionals that are in charge of half billion dollar budget, you know? Let, fifteen hundred professional staff or something like that with the city. There you go. Just off by a number. And it's half a million people.
Right.
You know, you have to have, put professionals in here at a, not a livable wage, a thriving wage that reflects the professionalism and the duties of this job.
A senior executive wage.
Very good phrasing. I like that.
Yeah. I, so to answer your question, you know, I, um, moved into the southeast deliberately from the southwest because I wanted to invest in the southeast. I fell in love with the southeast. I thought so many of the leaders there were doing such amazing work. Um, I didn't realize that investment would be running for city council. And last year, November 2024, I started, people started to ask me, will you run? And my first answer, my first answer was, how am I gonna pay my bills?
Yeah.
Uh, and I said, it's a nice thought, but how am I gonna pay my bills?
With corruption, obviously.
Obviously developer funded over here.
Give me the ice cream. Fix the pothole. I've got a briefcase in the back. Yes.
And so I, I leaned in, I said, no, who's gonna pay my bills? And then, um, then what happened? And, but it, it wouldn't get out of my head, right? You know, I literally had about half a dozen people ask me. And around that time, uh, November fifteenth, to be exact, I think, my, one of my favorite aunts passed.
And 2024.
Correct. And she, uh, was a Korean immigrant. She, uh, was married to a service member and she worked in the federal government until she retired. Um, she battled cancer off and on and we thought that she had turned a corner and just very rapidly we lost her. And so she's, one, the reason why my word of the year was courage, because I felt like she's somebody who came here in the seventies and with very little English, with nothing, you know, with no, no ownership in a capitalistic sense.
Yeah.
And she created a really robust life for herself and she wasn't scared to do so. And I'm, I'm like, man, that had to be tough. That had to be tough to be a Korean woman navigating an American system. And she had thriving businesses. She had a thriving federal government career. And here I am scared to run for a municipal office with all of the, the, the shoulders of the giants that I was able to stand on to include her. I said, I, I can't make excuses. I have to make this work. If this is in my spirit, if this is something that's not leaving me, this is obviously something that I want. And who, who am I to only be a dutiful descendant when it's actually my job to be an ancestor as well?
So what was that turning point then of like, I mean, that's, um, it's a huge call, right? And to then like, I'm going to be your representative in this neighborhood, not just here. People around town are gonna be calling me too. But at the same time, rent's still gotta get paid. I still gotta buy food, you know, like the necessity. So how, like, how do you turn a corner on that? It's just like, not to dox you in your personal finances.
Oh, God, they're in disarray.
No, but like, that's a, that's, I know so many people, myself included, who'd be like, I would run tomorrow if that made sense.
Yeah, it, it came at a lot of sacrifice. Um, we've had to tighten our belt significantly in order to make this work. Um, so a few things, my partner, um, who has a livable wage needed to be on board and, and was like, yeah, you know what? Let's do it. Um, but it wasn't just my partner, because at the end of the day, I joke and I told them, this is what I told Mary Lou Makepeace too. I said, uh, we're on a fixed income. And it's true, because he's a soldier. So it is a fixed income, right?
You can literally bring up the tables right now and see, I, what's his rank? Okay.
Right, exactly. And it's, and it's not like a, you know, married like a, a colonel or something. I married an enlisted, enlisted soldier. So the pay is different. But it was.
My dad was enlisted, so I totally get that.
Listen, you have to, you have to make the budget work, right? So we, we had to make that decision with, with my partner. Um, and also we made the decision with my parents. I have two sets of parents, because, you know, uh, modern family, divorced families. And both sets of parents said, we will support you in doing this. So, um, so, so, yeah, that's, that's how the math had to work. Otherwise, otherwise, um, it wouldn't. So, you know, I got an allowance when I was a little, actually, I really didn't get an allowance because I'm black and Korean and neither one of those cultures believe in an allowance. I got a little play money every now and again, but an allowance, that was not a thing. You are allowed to live here. You are allowed to breathe. You are allowed to exist.
Right.
But now I have an allowance.
Oh, see, I had an allowance growing up. It was $5 a week and I had to pick up the dog poop. And I made the mistake because I hated that job. I said, mom and dad, I quit. And they're like, okay, you're still gonna have to do it though. So I did it for free instead. And then I didn't, you know, I didn't really understand the value of money because it was like, meh, well, whatever. Just gonna have to do the shit anyway.
Cause we're all in this shit together.
Exactly. So I'm gonna go to Travis and be like, so I was talking with Kim the other day. You don't know who I am, Travis. Maybe we've shaken hands, but we've got this really cool thing. I think you're gonna love it, you know? So, so you made that decision. You had the, the, so what are those first steps? Like, obviously the paperwork, they have, you gotta get your treasure, la, 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 la. But like, what are you thinking for, like, what's your message? Like, why are you running that you don't see in the world?
I, I find myself to be a bridge. And I felt like even in the community, I was doing a lot of, of chamber of commerce work and I was doing a lot of grassroots work. And I feel like sometimes, a lot of times actually, um, those are two communities that aren't necessarily talking with each other. I think this is a problem in a lot of organizations is that the people who are in the work, doing the, doing the work, doing the operations, they're your subject matter experts.
Yeah.
And then you've got folks who maybe once upon a time were doing the work, but now they are all your senior executives and your leaders. But the two, this, this, the worker group isn't able to have communication with the leaders who are making the decisions that impact their work. And I felt like I could be a bridge for different pockets of community here. Um, also by virtue of, of my lived experience being Asian, being black, being military, being a single mom, being, you know, just having a lot of these different intersections. That's not true. In this weird intersection that I lived in, this freaking Shibuya crossing that I lived in.
Yeah, everyone crosses at once. Exactly. Yep.
I've, I've felt like, oh, I have an opportunity to represent a lot of different pockets of people, whereas historically, I think a lot of electeds represent like one pocket of people.
Mm-hmm.
Something like that. Words. I don't know.
Interest developers. That's right.
No, I didn't say that.
Not you specifically, but I'm sure, I know that there are candidates. It's like, hey, gotta help Norwood or whatever, you know? Make sure that they're still doing good. It seems like they're on bad times. I wanna pump them up, you know, a little.
Maybe, maybe. So I, I really. I really felt like I had the, I had this unique opportunity to represent a lot of different people.
And this is coming as Yolanda is term limited. So it's like, all right, who then serves that district? And that, and I know there was, it was, it was kind of a big field of candidates.
We had, uh, four on the ballot, three officially running. I adore Chauncey. I think he's fantastic.
Yeah.
And, and I thought there were some gaps that I might be able to fill better than, than he would. Um, he is, he is an activist. And we, we need that activist energy. And activism is not governance, right? And, and I felt like we are at a time in the southeast where we have to strike where the iron is hot and with a lot of different opportunities. And, and, and I'm not telling you anything I haven't told him. I said, you know, I said, I think you could do a fantastic job, but I think it would also require you to spend more time to build relationships and build rapport with different leaders in the city. And that's time taking away from our southeast community. And, um, and Shereah Elliott Sterling, I think she's a darling. I really genuinely enjoyed getting to know her. I think right about now, she should be, uh, popping out a new Colorado Springs resident. So I do need to follow up with her and say, congratulations. But, you know. Yeah. I mean, hey, that's, that's awesome. I think she applies for the Trump baby credit or something, the 529 plan. So I think that, that's awesome. Good for her.
Yeah.
And for anybody else who's having a baby in the next few years, I think, I don't know, whatever. But, uh, but I thought she was delightful.
That's one of the little bright spots, right?
Always gotta find the silver lining.
Yeah.
I thought she was delightful. I really enjoyed getting to know her during the campaign trail. And I also felt like I was more involved in the community. So I wanted to leverage my community involvement to better serve our southeast community. And yeah.
So what did you, when you're going out there, you're canvassing, you're meeting with people, you're having your events and stuff, like what are you learning that maybe you didn't know, like going in?
You know, I think, and you know, I think that's the thing. We actually, most of us agree on whatever our problems are.
Mm-hmm.
I don't.
Potholes.
Yes, potholes definitely came up. Um, I think most, there was, when I talked to folks, there was very few things. I don't think there was anything that really surprised me.
Mm-hmm.
I think most folks, regardless of where you live, kind of say the same thing. They want to live in safe and clean, clean, clean areas. They want to know that they have a thriving business community. They want to feel supported in whoever they are as their individual person. They want to feel like they're a part of the solution. They want to feel like they're a part of the community. I think I consistently heard that and they want to drive on roads that have less or no potholes.
Yeah.
And I heard that consistently with pretty much everybody I spoke to.
Did you, did you get the, uh, the multimodal people in there too? Maybe we don't want to drive at all?
Some, but not many.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a whole thing. Like, you have to have a car. So it kind of warps the perspectives a little bit. It's like, if you expect that you need to drive a car, you at least want to make sure that the car thing does good.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think that I hear a lot about I think, I think that I hear a lot about people worried, um, when they're in cars because of the way that people drive, people worried about pedestrians and cyclists. I recently have become a cycling enthusiast.
Thanks to Pike Ride and you got to ride with Alan.
I'm a little obsessed right now. It's problem. My social media feed is nothing but e-bikes right now.
The algorithms, like, you looked at one ad and now, hey, you, you got six grand. I can give you this.
Like, it is a problem, but truly now, now I was scared, but remember, my word is courage. So I've been scared to ride, but at the same time, I was like, I think I am kinda crazy to be riding down Union on an e-bike, but it's fine.
So there, so uh, down, you, south of um, Austin Bluffs, there's the, the trail. And there's that hairpin thing underneath there with the tunnel.
I haven't been there yet.
You have to. So that's the way I would come in over the north side of Palmer Park. And uh, I would be coming alongside Union and then I'd see someone out on the shoulder on Union riding a bike and it's like, go be with God, dude. I'm gonna be over here where it's a lot safer.
I do feel, I do feel like that, but I also at this point where I'm like, well, I'm a city councillor and if I get hit, then maybe we could have some reform.
I actually heard Nancy almost got hit the other day. Riding to the cab, yeah, yeah, like that last, cause there was a car turning on red that didn't see her. And she said she screamed. Uh, that's her story to tell, but that's, it's like, ban right turn on red, stop fricking stopping in the crosswalk, blocking me and my pedestrianism. My fiance is just all the time, it's like, I didn't stop in the crosswalk.
You know, but.
Thank you, Nick. Welcome.
But that's also where we have to do better with design too. Right? Cause I'm, I'm teaching my seventeen year old how to drive right now. There have been so many times where the kid stops before the crosswalk and I said, you have to go up because you can't see.
Yeah, you have to stop at the stop bar, but then you creep out to gain your visibility. Yes.
No, I tell the kid to zoom out. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
No, no, and even the pressure, because the infrastructure hasn't grown to accommodate for all these extra cars. The number of cars has grown and so now, like, all the time, people are just stressed out when they're driving. Like, it's not fun when you have to drive everywhere and then everyone else has to drive everywhere too. Um, and so that it, then you wanna be the bike city maybe, uh, where you have a viable option to get around town. Because when you build a new thing, like say an ice cream shop out on the east side, what do you do? Southside, there you go, over by the airport where everyone goes for their ice cream.
Right, we do.
Right next to the Amazon warehouse. You just pick up your fricking anyway. But you automatically build a road to it. Always. You're not gonna just like, alright, we built this ice cream shop in the middle of this field. Like you're gonna have infrastructure, you're gonna have a road where you can drive car, you're gonna have parking because there's still parking rooms, sure. And, but you don't think about that for bikes. We should, you know, we should, but we don't.
Because if we had more bike lanes, it would encourage more people to ride. You wouldn't have to lean into the word of the year courage to ride. You could just ride.
Some of, yeah, cause there's four categories of bikes. It's like enthusiastic but concerned, you know? And all that. So you've been riding your bike, but haven't you had that, like, I can go these pla, that, that was, when I bought my bike two, three years ago, almost in January. Um, there was definitely a, here's where the cars go, here's where the people can go. And then the bikes can kinda do something in between that uses both, but maybe doesn't exist. So you have to kinda plan in advance of that. Have you had to navigate that literally and figuratively?
Yes and no. So I have been probably a little too radical and enthusiastic. So I'm like, let me just get on the bike. That's where I'm trying to go.
Let me go down Shelton.
And I'm just going, right? And as a result of doing that, because I did drive from, drive. I did ride.
Class two motorcycle, bicycles aren't allowed.
I did ride my bike, well, not my bike, the community bike. I did ride it from my house to City Hall and I was on Union and I thought, hmm, this probably isn't a good idea. I did it anyway. But after that, I did go online and I found, I can't remember the name of the website, but there's some website that gives you the best routing.
Yeah, I mean, Google Maps will do that to some extent, but I'm also imagining. You get to the, you City Hall. Yeah, I, I just imagine you've like closed your office and you're like, shit. I don't know how. I have to face that devil again.
But I, I'm, I also am kinda bold. I'm like, I will go where the cars go. I actually don't like going where the pedestrians go. I don't like, I don't like riding on sidewalks. I, I will do it for like, like a split second, but I would prefer not to.
If it's, if nothing else is available, yeah.
Especially downtown when the speed limit is thirty, like the, these e-bikes.
Forty, forty-five.
My gosh, I know, that's so frustrating.
Yeah, that it is. And thankfully, downtown, there's plenty of like wide sidewalks and growing ones now, thanks to the Tahone revitalization project.
Come through.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm very excited for when that finishes up. So you, um, how was election night?
Election night.
Were you like, I got this? Or were you like, I don't know?
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't think that I won. I, I thought it.
Even when you won, you were like, I don't know.
I, I, well, you know what? That actually is true. Cause even when I won, I was like, hmm, we have to wait for these votes to be certified. I said, let's not, let's not, let's not, you know, jump the gun here. And folks were like, Kimberly, you won by like ten points. You're good. And I'm like, hmm, you just never know, so.
When the Carmen line votes came in and it was like eighty percent, it's like, I think we're good.
Yeah, the, I see. And I didn't, I didn't win like that, so I couldn't have confidence. So.
I mean, yeah.
I, I was, I was excited. I was hopeful. I was humbled. Um, but winning, winning.
Were you at home? Did you have a party?
I did have a, a watch party at the Satellite Hotel.
Oh, no.
Yeah, uh, but winning, winning or the assumption of winning, the, the hope of winning. It was like, oh, wow, okay, we did it. We crossed the finish line. But you literally just crossed the finish line to a larger race.
Right, because this is where the part where it's not as fun begins, cause you may have enjoyed campaigning. And peo, some people, I think they just like running for the sake of running.
For those that are listening, I am shaking my head aggressively.
No, that was, so which part did you like the best, though?
Okay, the fun part about campaigning is getting out to meet people and to learn what their, their challenges are, what they like about the city. You know, see their vision. That's hands down the most fun part. The worst part, candidate forums, candidate questionnaires.
That seems like a slight, like three pointer, like just go. Cause you're not having to respond to each other. You're just giving your points.
No, no, it's not enough time. There's too many leading questions. There's too many of them.
Why did you let the city go to crap, Kim? You haven't even been elected yet and you're already screwing up.
Oh my gosh, I think that I did the math at one point. I think in that short, like ninety day election cycle, I think there was like thirty-five forums and questionnaires.
The question, the questionnaire seemed like a nightmare.
They were not fun.
No, no, and that's where it's like, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna take all your questions. I'm gonna put all the answers up on my site. And you can pick and choose what, which ones you wanna use. And that, it's twenty-five dollars um, a license to get in there, donate to my.
I love that idea. We should do that. I am losing.
But no, that, yes, having been involved with a number of campaigns.
No, don't get me wrong. Some were very fun. Some were fun. Some are very community oriented and, and a lot of fun. Some of them are, are just not.
They're, they're partisan hacks.
Yes. I think my, the least favorite question that I got asked was, and only was asked this one time, was how will you doge the city's budget?
Oh, God. God.
Yeah, and, and I have to shout out Dave Donaldson. He um, he educated that group and he was like, that's not how this works. This is how the city's budget is presented. This is the budget season. This is how it's present, you know? And it was, it was, he gave a very thorough educational answer. I don't know, I can't recall if the community was receptive or not to that, but I really appreciated his education. And um, and I think if you were to take a, a, you know, the word of the year from ChatGPT, deep dive into the city's budget, you'd be very impressed how efficiently the city is running. And how we need to actually, yes, we do need financial reform, but does that mean to, to cut our budget drastically? No.
Or haphazardly. Cause every time I see that comment, it's like, what's the, what's the city doing about this? I just wanna take the four hundred and fifty page budget and just slam it on their desk and be like, you find it. You find where, you know, the mayor's getting the cut and the second home and the this and that and the corruption. Oh, it's because the preparers have hidden all the, the conspiratorial nonsense all the way down, flat earth turtles and all that stuff.
And yeah, sure, you can manipulate numbers some, but, but you, we have a, such a huge responsibility to taxpayers that, like, that budget is big for a reason. We have five hundred thousand people that we're trying to serve.
Over two hundred square miles.
Correct. So, 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 yeah, that was probably my least favorite question is how will you doge the city's budget? Because we are not, um, and my answer was, I think we need to be focused on how do we actually increase our revenue? Because the lodging uh, LART um, is not high enough. Tourists don't invest enough in our city that they consume. And we actually need to find out ways to increase our revenue so that we can provide more city services. You wanna, you know, I, I think a lot of people don't like to frame it this way, but the budget is there to provide city services. We are, have been a growing city and our budget increases haven't matched the growth of the city. Yes, yes. And so, so now you wanna know why we can't get a hold of these potholes? Why we don't have enough public safety? Why we don't have enough programming for parks, wrecks and cultural services? Why, why, why code enforcement can't come out and, and make sure that your neighbors are supposed to be doing the things according to ordinance? Why we can't pick up that abandoned vehicle on time? It's all related to the budget. Services cost money. I think we are such a, a giving people in Colorado Springs with volunteerism. And there's a lot of things that, that tie to people's heart and I, I love that. I love that. And things cost money. Services cost money. People's time costs money. And if your time is valuable, so is that person who works for neighborhood services or code enforcement that needs to go out there and tow that vehicle. Or make sure that that person's yard is in compliance with the city ordinance.
They don't have like six trucks like in their front yard and then they're double parked in the driveway blocking sidewalks. Like I could seriously just walk around my neighborhood and be like, go COS, go COS, go COS. And to what end? Like, you know?
That's the other thing. Like, we do have the benefit of having this go COS app. I think a lot of times we have to ask ourselves, what's our individual responsibility? And I would say this whether I was on city council or not, but I'm sure people would be like, you're only saying that cause you're on city council. But what's your individual responsibility? You have a duty to your city as well. Like as a resident, whether you're five years old or five hundred years old, you have a duty to your city. It's not, it, we, the, the, a city is an organization and they can't drive around Colorado Springs and be like, here are all the problems. Let me go, go, go run behind and fix all this. You as a resident, you have a responsibility to your city too.
I'm a fourth generation Springs native. Every, I don't have to do anything. I've done my bit by just being born here. I got the sticker.
Birthright, huh?
Exactly, Burton. So spicy. I, and that kinda feeds into um, some extent that what we were talking about with the approval. And that is, this is still a conservative town. You have people who don't believe that the government should be doing this stuff and yet we have leadership that is like, I mean, when, when Dave Donaldson has to stand up and say, actually, you know, this is actually how this works. It is not some corrupt scheme to, to divorce you of your money. It is, this is here for a reason. Like there's some reality making in there. So people don't understand what the point of a city council is and then they wonder why the things aren't getting done.
You know, I don't like the word conservative. Or progressive. Because.
You like ice cream.
Yes, that is, yes. You know why? Because when we say conservative and when we say progressive, you're, we make so many assumptions on what that actually means. And I don't know what that means for real because I'm not in your brain. I need to communicate with you to figure out what's the value that is important to you. Like, a lot of times when we talk about conservative, we'll talk about fiscally, like, like fiscally conservative, smaller government, right? But conservatives, Republicans have approved for larger budgets. And larger govern, so like, what, what does this, like, this conservative and progressive really mean? And it depends on your time, you know, it, it was uh, maybe progressive once upon a time to, I don't know, insert item here, but now fifty years later, that progressive thought is conservative.
Well, I think, I mean, you're, you're right to like, you may have conservative ideology. You know, where it's like, let's hack, let's doge this government. So all it is is just, you know, a dancing robot on a corner and not a very good one at that. Because we're spent, you know, we're getting it on AliExpress because we're saving money. But then you do have those conservative ideologues who didn't get into government. And they're like, we want to show you how broken this is by breaking it ourselves and it becomes a kleptocracy. And it becomes this, we don't want the government to do this thing that is actually, it's better if that the government do this thing. Like the public utility that we were talking about at the head of the conversation of, that's why we don't sell the hospital to so and so and get a one-time payout. We don't sell the public utility so that we can get paid one time and then everyone's rates shoot through the roof so that someone can buy another yacht. And then progressivism, I guess, I'm not trying to be a professor here, cause what the hell do I know? But it's like the idea that everyone should be involved. Everybody welcome, you know, Fannie Mae was saying, you know?
Yes, did you know we're coming up on her, I hate, I don't know what the, how do you say this? Death anniversary? I don't know how the proper way, I don't know the PC way to say it.
It's not death-aversary.
Right, I don't, anyway.
Celebration of life.
We are coming up on her celebration of life on September thirteen.
So you know what we should do is we should tear down the five star bank that's on the corner there and rebuild the cotton club right where that parking lot is for historical preservation.
You talk to Five Star Bank about that.
I think we should just do it and then see what they think.
Let me know how that goes.
No, it's, it's been interesting to see how much historic property was destroyed so they could just put up a parking lot. And it's like, because the city was not built for cars when it was founded a hundred fifty years ago, cause cars didn't exist. Sort of like, let's just bulldoze a whole bunch of buil, there's a, I don't know what building that is. It used to be the seven eleven on the corner there of Pike's Peak and uh, Tahone. It's a tall building. I don't know what's in there. There's just advertisements for city business and that. And it's just floating alone like a Minecraft chunk that someone didn't bulldoze. And I don't know what it, and it's just there. And it's surrounded by a parking lot, cause that's where, that's where Avenue nineteen is. And the ga, the str, the statues, you know where it's at, but.
I know, yeah, but I don't know what that building is.
No one knows what that building is.
I'm gonna find out now, just for you.
Thank you.
I, I have spent, I mean, City Hall is downtown. The city admin building is downtown, so I've spent way more time downtown than I ever have in the last a hundred and twenty-two days.
Yeah, before that, yeah. I had the same thing when I worked at the Indian. I had to walk down to the church.
Oh, that's right. The Indians, right across from the Pioneer's Museum.
It was. Now it's in our imagination. It's in our dreams and our memories and where the logo still exists. So you, you win. You get, you get to go up and do the sho, the show, you know, the ceremony, there's all that. You get to be seated. Do you, you get to pick, you get to pick your office, right? Like, no? I talked to Bill Murray many years ago. He's like, I want the one in the corner. Cause he wants the three whiteboards.
No, you don't get to pick your office. No, so you don't get to pick your office. You don't get to pick where you sit on the dais. The city council.
Why are you even running?
I know, right? The city council president picks all that. So the city council president, well, one, the city. I know, right? The city council president picks all that. So the city council president, well, one, the city council president is elected by, by the, by the nine. And, um, they are actually, uh, after the mayor, that they're first in succession for mayorship.
Okay. How does that work? Oh, the, the president of the, yeah, okay.
The president of the council.
Not all nine of you, like you're gonna suddenly become like Voltron into this.
No, and there, and there is a succession for all nine of us as well.
Who's the designated survivor?
I don't think we have one, but, but, but kind of we do. And I would say that's me because I am last on, in succession.
So you don't show up at any of the events because we have to save you. We put you in a giant concrete box.
That works.
So that nothing hap- so if something were to happen to anyone else.
I would be safe.
Yeah, I am the mayor now. After this terrible tragic accident.
God, that would be awful. That would be really awful.
Yeah, that's why you don't load the third story of an old building with ice cream and a celebration. And then it just comes caving down and everyone's crushed to death by dairy products and it smells terrible. It's the freaking worst. So you have all the show, horse and pony show, you're everyone's celebrating, everyone's crying.
So the, 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 the behind the scenes, I guess, is you do the swearing in, which is, which is fun, right? And then you immediately do all your photos, like you do your, your.
Official photos.
Your headshots and then the, the city council headshots and then.
Did you have to like prep like, alright?
Oh, I had the Kim Davis do my makeup. Nobody else is allowed to touch my face.
Alright.
And, and so she's, she's amazing. And then you fill out more paperwork.
You should look good? Or is it just you're having a portrait?
I think they tell you. I think they tell you you're gonna do pictures.
This is literally what's gonna be hanging in there. Okay.
Yeah, I think they tell you that. And then you fill out more paperwork than you could ever imagine and meet more people than you could ever imagine. They run a well-oiled machine up there.
They've done this a couple of times. Cause you have like, there's fiduciary, quasi judicial stuff and you're a legal authority. Legally, legally illegal authority.
Right. And you're, so, so that, that was overwhelming, but, but they run a, a, a smooth ship over there and then.
At least?
They do.
Okay.
But I was so busy and you're so busy that there's this kind of person who says, what's your dietary preferences? And then you tell them and then they give you a plate and you sit down and everybody's coming to you and you're filling out paperwork and you're just taking bites in between. And then you have your first official city council meeting, which is where you elect your city council president. And that city council president picks your office, picks your, uh, place on the dais, picks the boards, commissions and committees that you will be a li- liaison to. Um, that is, you know, that's, that's the boss.
So you, which, which boards are you on?
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, I am on.
She's got her notepad out. She is, it is a long, it is so long, it is rolling off the table right now. Oh my goodness. Okay.
I am on.
I don't know, she's gonna get to them all.
I am on Colorado Springs Utilities, the Airport Advisory Commission, Hispudoric Preservation Board, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services, Trails, Open Space and Park, Citizens Advisory Committee, Community Development Advisory Committee, the Health Foundation, Pike's Peak Area Council of Government, Governments, that's an alternate position and Pike's Peak Rural Transit Authority.
Okay, those are some good ones.
Yes.
Yeah. It's not C tab, but Nancy's there, so she's taking care of us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So how's that? How's that going? No, well, so what, your schedule is then you have the work session and on Mondays, every other week you have the public meeting on the following day, Tuesday, and that, and then you're just boarding it up and shaking hands and going to lunches? Like what's your, what's a week of Kim's schedule like a city council?
Oh my gosh, it's crazy. So like, for instance, Wednesday, August thirteenth, I started the day. What did I even do? I don't even remember. All I can tell you is that.
You forgot your day.
There was so much going on. There was the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments meeting. There was Peterson, Space Force Base and Shreve State of the Base going on. There was Team C O S picnic. There was a Pike's Peak R T A, P P R T A meeting happening. There were just, every day is a full day. Yes, every day. It is ridiculous. Uh, yesterday, my day was so full that I had to get off of the parks wreck and cultural service. Well, I had to join the Parks, Wrecks and Cultural Services Board meeting a little bit late. Um, there's just every day. And then in between you have your emails, you have constituent phone calls.
Right.
And you're trying really hard to honor all of that. And I will tell you, Nick, it is actually impossible. Um, I, I received over the last two weeks, I think ninety-seven emails from all related to LART funding for Pride, which I am glad to have received, to be clear. Um, because there was some, I received probably about thirty emails that said, hey, we shouldn't fund Pride with LART funding. And then I received ninety-seven emails that said we should fund.
Okay, that's what I was gonna, okay, yeah, what's that break? But then how many emails did you get about LART funding for Juneteenth?
One?
One? Cause I remember that was a big controversial thing is that LART had to cut the funding in like half for Juneteenth.
I think I got one. Honestly, I think I got one email.
Is it cause, okay.
So, so, you know, so you're trying to balance all of that. I haven't responded to those ninety-seven emails. I was kinda waiting for the wave of emails to die down and I will do a, a, a response to everyone at once.
Yeah.
Like I literally copied and pasted every single person's email on an Excel spreadsheet so that I can actually reply. Cause I, it is.
Seems like there's an easy way to do that, but I don't know what it is often.
Once you let me know, cause I, I need some efficiencies in my life.
Yeah.
Um, because I do feel this pressure and I was actually just talking to State Representative Amy Pascal about this. That.
Great lady.
Uh, amazing.
Yeah.
About the, like, that's one of the things that you worry about at night. You're like, man, I need to reply to all these emails because I want to be available to constituents. I wanna like, and they're more than constituents. These are neighbors. These are like, these are people in your community and I want them to feel like I reached out to my person and I heard a response back.
But there's that work-life balance of I have to shut this off because I'm still a human being at the end of the day and I still have to, like, I gotta get my, you know, season three of whatever in.
I don't even watch TV.
Okay.
But I do.
Play video games like Minecraft, I know.
No, I have to, I have to, I have to, have to have the work-life balance so that I can get the hours with my kids. So my kid can get a proper license, you know? And, um, and that's exhausting. I mean, literally it's exhausting. We were, cause we need nighttime hours and it's like eight-thirty at night and I'm exhausted. But we're out there driving, um.
Just keep driving around Walmart. It's good. It's fine. Up and down that, make sure you signal and before you make your left turn, you're good.
But it, but it, but it is exhausting. It's a lot, but it is fun. It is, it is genuinely fun to serve. But if you have suggestions on how I can be more efficient in, uh, communications, in calendar management, um, I can tell you that myself and probably thousands of other elected officials would, would sing your praises until the end of time.
You know, I'm not gonna say I'm some sort of productivity expert, even though I work all the time and my fiance makes sure that I actually have to take breaks. But I will say that the, uh, focus modes on my phone really help off. It's like, alright, these apps aren't gonna start notifying me.
Oh, I have no notifications on my phone.
Yeah, okay.
So even when my.
Dig into it.
Yeah, even when my phone is not on focus mode, the only notifications that can reach me are, um, phone calls, text message and Facebook Messenger, since that's basically text messages.
Yeah.
I, I have like very limited, uh, notifications on my phone, which I recommend for everybody. You don't have to be elected. You need, that's for everyone.
Yeah, that's the nightmare hellscape that we've made for ourselves just as a society, just like that. Has there anyone been really like truly angry that you didn't reply? Like there has to be, right?
Yes, actually. And I, I, I just pinned it to my top of my inbox because I want to reply to her. Um, because I, and, and I, because she's angry, I want to reply.
No one emails when they're happy.
Actually, some people have.
Some people do, okay. Credit to them, the happy people.
I spoke out, um, opposed to the non-sanctuary city resolution.
The third, the fourth one?
Yeah, the third one. And, and I had several people actually email me and say thank you. Um, and then I spoke out because there was some negative comments about Pride and the Satanist organization participating in the parade.
Church in there?
Yes. And I, I spoke out in support of freedom of speech and freedom of religion. And I got some really pleasant emails from some folks. Um, but I've gotten some really mad emails too. Um, I actually got, um.
Can you block them? Like, can you just say like, even though you're a legal represent, can you block people? Is there?
I'm sure I could, but I don't. I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause some people, like I was easy on that for a while and now it's like, no, you don't exist anymore.
Yeah, no, I, I just leave it.
I mean, I, I don't wanna say they don't exist.
Right, right.
I didn't Thanos them into bits or anything, but I, I don't hear their whine. Like when people keep complaining about the bike lanes downtown, it's like you lost that one. Goodbye. It's, they're here and they're only gonna get better.
They are gonna get better.
You know?
They are gonna get.
They are gonna get better. We're gonna build a network out of it.
Yes.
But you do have to decide like, hey, this is how, this is gonna work. I need to stop reading emails after a while.
Yes, it is true. It is true. And, um, but you know, it's like that balance of accessibility and balance of like literally just being a human.
Yeah. Have you had any like weird ones or it's like, Kim, can you meet me at two AM in the alley behind Pike's Peak or something like that? This is constituent urgency.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, I did have.
Show up with the evidence.
I did have somebody, show up with ice cream. I did have somebody who lodged a complaint against me to the White House and they screenshot it and sent it to me to share that.
Oh, that was nice of them.
Yeah, so, and to which I.
Proof, yeah.
Which, to which I kindly, I did, I kindly replied like, like, I hope you find resolution and I'm, you know, I'm, you know, sorry, you're not happy with the answer.
Do you have a claim number, like a ticket number? We can look it up and it's like against Kimberly.
I will, I, I, I'll find it. I'll text it to you.
I wanted, that sounds kinda dope. So I hate LinkedIn. I think it's a terrible cesspool, nightmare hellscape, but sometimes I open it. Because whatever reason, and I, and I see sometimes you'll have posts that algorithmic people pop up and it is kind of a, hey guys, just a heads up, but when you're reaching out to your representative, maybe you do this or that. So it seems like there's some trying to address some issues, like maybe provide some information or don't be a jerk or whatever when you're reaching out to our representative because we're humans too or something like that. Do you get those kind of vibes? Like this is the place where I can be safe with that?
I will always try to foster better communication between people. Even if it means that I gotta sometimes eat it. You know, but I will, I will, because I think, you know, I, I've, you mentioned something about call center. I have, I have way more call center experience than I would like to have.
A week is usually long enough. Yeah. Two and a half years.
I, but I think just people, you know, people, we are not emotionally regulated.
Or intelligent.
I didn't say that.
No, emotionally intelligent.
Okay, yes. Yes, we, we aren't. We, we lack a lot of, and I'm not saying I have, I haven't figured it out. By no stretch of the imagination am I saying that. But I think that we, um, we don't know how to manage ourselves very well. And, and that is getting worse because of the systems and processes that we are willingly accepting into our lives.
Yeah.
To include notification fatigue, right? And so I think that people's true desire is not to lash out at people. It's simply what they know to do. And maybe it's worked for them, maybe it hasn't worked for them. And I feel like, at least for me, I feel more of a calling to be kinder, be gentler. Because being a rude, angry person or politician for that matter, doesn't yield better community results. It just gets us the same downward spiral. So I'm gonna choose kindness, even if it means somebody is really mean to me and I'm gonna promote that.
Yeah. No, I agree.
My nose is running, y'all.
No.
It's okay. I, I just won't.
Just rub it. We've Dave, Dave, there we go. Look at that. So your job is supposed to be the legislative body of that, but as I understand it, it's like, when we, when I was doing the civic leaders fellowship, it was like eighty percent of the stuff you guys look over is stuff that's like handed down from the mayor. Cause they have all the professional staff to say, we need, the city needs this. And you're like, well, okay. And so like, do you get to, like, are you writing bills? Like where's the Kim Gold Ice Cream for Everyone bill?
There, there never will be, cause we just don't have the budget for it. I've, I've, I've worked with our legislative analysts.
And stuff like that, cause I know LART, um, and so much of our bandwidth legislatively has to go back to renewing stuff because of Tabor.
So, so a lot of things that we, we will have to do as a body or bring it on the ballot, right? So LART will have to go on the ballot.
Yeah.
Um, if city council were to get a wage that it's not the wage that it is now, that will need to be a ballot.
A senior executive wage, tier thirty-seven. Yes, of course.
Yes. So a lot of things that will have to be ballot initiatives. You can bring forward resolutions, like for instance, the non-sanctuary, like that's, that's a, that.
That's just a thing you can do.
Yeah, yeah, you can, um, have.
Can, should.
Have I brought up one? No, the one I will be bringing forward to council in September. Uh, cause I, I wanna, I wanna focus on the big things and I wanna focus on the things that I said I was going to do during the campaign. Um, is the Southeast Strong Community Plan. So hopefully in September.
Cause there's, there is a master plan for the southeast and that with zoning and all that. I got to look at it again the other day.
Yeah.
In regards to transit and that.
The, so I will be bringing that forward. Uh, that's my, that's my ice cream bill.
Okay.
No ice cream, but whatever.
Maybe potential for potential.
Maybe.
For maybe that, uh-huh.
There's talks about economic development in there. Maybe we could throw a ice cream shop in there.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, so that's, that's what I will be bringing forward. And honestly, I feel like, um, I didn't, I, I didn't, for lack of a better way to say it, I didn't prep for this. I didn't, I didn't come in with like, here's like the, the.
The twenty bills I wanna get.
Right, right.
I've already photocopied them and they're ready to go.
Here you go, like Google Drive right here.
Yeah.
I, I, so I need to. I need to take time to, to learn what's important to be, but more importantly, what's important to, to residents. To find out what, what's the best kinds of legislation to put forward. And more importantly, to not duplicate any legislation that's already been put forward.
Sure, that's easy to do.
And, and I feel like.
Stop parking in the crosswalks.
Right, that's gonna be my legislation. But I feel like that's, that's something that a lot of folks may not focus on and, and is, they just wanna like, hey, here's my brand new idea. Well, let's not think about just what's our brand new idea, cause there's very few things in this world that are new.
Yeah.
Let's find out. Right, like, so let's find out what has been going on and, um, sometimes modifications are better than the new thing, air quote new.
So when you, when you have those, like, what do those discussions look like? It's like, no, I won't support that. And you're throwing pizza at each other or something at a lunch and I know the mayor comes over for lunch and stuff like that, cause that comes up in me is, is the mayor coming? Is this a mayor's lunch? Oh, well, we'll hold public comment until afterward.
We, um, we normally have an agenda. I'm pretty sure that agenda's, I'm pretty sure that agenda's public. Um, no, they're, they're like, you know what? Right now, we are doing a lot of conversation about charter review. And, um, and we just, you know, go around and have pleasant conversation. I think sometimes, I think sometimes because of what's public as far as work session and city council.
Yeah.
Um, and there's disagreement or conversation dialogue. I think people may think it's spicier than it really is. It's, it's really not, you know, like.
It's normally boring.
It's, it's really not. And then I think the other thing is, we, I believe we have become so conditioned to not disagree with people that when you disagree, it, it, people wanna take it personally instead of professionally.
Yeah.
You know, the, the truth is, um, if you take a lot of your emotion out of it and you listen to city council, especially if you listen to Dave Donaldson, he asked some really good questions. Maybe you don't like the tone of what he asked it. Maybe, maybe there's, you, you don't like the reason he asked it. But these are good questions and it's good dialogue. And that's the point of having a body of nine. There's the reason why there's a body of nine versus having one city counselor.
Right.
Because you are supposed to disagree. You are supposed to poke holes into things because one person cannot represent nine, five hundred thousand people or nine for that matter. You need a diverse body and, and I think it's good that we have some dialogue. And it's not like we, we're like, oh my God, I can't believe she said that. I'm not gonna talk to her. Like, no.
No, cause it does seem like there would be, like you have to prep some behind the scenes before you go out on the dais to like publicly talk about it, right?
Well, I mean, uh, like that's in, and that's the agenda. You, the, the general public even has access to our agenda.
In advance.
The week prior. And if you go through that agenda, if you were to print it out, it's probably about, I don't know, eight inches worth of paper. Um, this is.
With all the attachments and stuff like that.
This is, this is materials that you are absolutely spending your, you're spending your weekend reading.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Yeah, because you have to be ready for, this is why we're rezoning from R three to MX. On the corner of, you know, Fontanaro and this, is, is there a second on this motion to like, really? This rezone is really controversial. You know why? I live three blocks away from there. I tell you what, this rezone's gonna be really bad. For at the last time someone rezoned anything, it blew up. Okay?
We've watched a lot of meetings.
I've tried. Uh, so that's, so you had your Mary Lou Mc, the first time that I, again, I didn't, I was too nervous. Uh, I.
I was nervous when I met her too.
Yeah, yeah. It's like I'm in the presence of a queen, you know?
Yes.
I was in there, I'd been, I'd wanted to make a presentation on, uh, the city should do a, make a convention center. Uh, and this was twenty eighteen, it was March. It's all in there. It's all public. God, these freaking jackasses with their freaking. That's why we, we're talking about this at sea time too.
We need a noise ordinance.
We need.
But who would enforce it? Anyway, I digress.
So I would, I'd been preparing for like weeks. It's like, this is exactly what I'm going to say. I had it printed out. And everything I still went over on time, cause you only have three minutes. It's like, I really need to cut fifty words. And in the front row, so that's, if you've never been to city council meeting, you have all these people, cause you have all these proclamations. And even my fiance is like, why are they proclaiming that it's Thanksgiving? Like all these holidays, like why are they wasting? And then everyone gathers together and it's like gobble, gobble. And then you disperse and, and like, why do you, first off, why do you do that?
To recognize significant events.
Why? We've got calendars. You don't need to do that. That's taxpayer money.
That's, that's, that's a part, that's a level of community engagement, you know, with, um, one of the proclamations that I did put forward was for Military Spouse Appreciation Day.
I mean, that I get, but like, like New Years.
I don't, I, I was not on council. I cannot.
But like, yeah, the, the recognition, it's St. Patty's Day or St. Patrick's Day or whatever, like why? And anyway, so they had all that, everyone's there. Um, and Mary Lou McPhee's was in the front row and I, I knew who she was and I was like. I'm just gonna hide like five rows back, cause this, the, it was oriented the other way. Before COVID, it was oriented long ways so that you're facing the west. There. Yeah, go check it out. They remodeled it so that it's along the south wall, but it used to be along the west wall ahead of COVID. Yeah. And so you had this long chamber rows full of chairs. And so you could be really, really far from what was going on. But then after you start getting through a few agenda items, it starts empty. And then by after lunch, you've got like a handful of people left. But yeah, no, that's my Mary Lou. And I went and talked about the convention center and how we need it because we do. Cause we don't have one, a city our size should have one. And, uh, Richard Skorman, who was the president at the time, he comes to me afterward. Or, uh, Don, so Don Knight, who was.
One, district six.
Just, yeah. Um, he says, oh, we can't do it because it's a charter thing. And then after we have a break, Richard's like, yeah, the Broadmoor people were like, you can't do that. We need the convention center down here so that we can, you know. You know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's a charter thing.
Yeah, it is. So it has to be a charter thing first, because it, it's like a vote in order for the city to even consider allowing the possibility of a prospect of maybe building a convention center. Um, and that's where, that's what you go in where Drake is. Just my little Ps and Qs.
Two cents?
That's my little two cents there after they super fun clean it up and all that stuff next to the natural gas insulation. So yeah, so that's my, that was my first interaction with city council. And then Bill Murray was complaining about everything, but I listened to his podcast every single week because I think he is so cool. Ain't that right, Dave? He is. He was a studio eight and own podcast before anything else.
Oh.
Yeah, he was.
You know, I, as I reflect, his name sounds familiar. I think.
He was at large.
No, no, I think I had, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. No. So any, so anyway, what are you learning about the role of the city? And then you're coming from the Chamber of Commerce and that, where you have this for profit motivation. But the city, the, what's good for the city is a public good. And so many like Southers, even Yemi are like, we need to engage the nonprofits. We need to have someone else coming in. City Odd is another thing. It's like, it's just sitting there because people are looking for the profit instead of the, the public good and that. So have you seen anything along those lines?
I think, well, one, I think there's some cool stuff happening with City Odd. Um, there is a, an agreement that we just entered into.
Another one, yeah.
And I, I.
Good luck to him.
I'm, I am hopeful. I am hopeful that it will, uh, be beneficial for the whole city. I think, I think more than anything, you know, to, to bring it all the way full circle, we're all in this together.
Yeah.
We are. That's, that's the overwhelming. Everything is connected in smaller Roto Springs, whether you want it to be or not. It is and, and we can do so much more together. And that's, that's my desired outcome is, you know, as you know, voter turnout, resident engagement. It's not where it's supposed to be. Um, that's what I said, that's just what I'd like to see more of. Uh, because we are all in this together, but in order to more effectively been it, be in it together, we need to be more than together. We need to be engaged and we need to be listening. And that's, that's what I feel like I'm learning more and more every day is that it's all connected, but we're, we're not, we're not spending enough time listening to each other.
Yeah. But how do you, so pivot, kind of one of my final points here. How do you get people engaged? That, like, that's the sixty four thousand dollar question is, you had the community tour, right? We went to all six, like a dozen people showed up on the low end and maybe a couple dozen showed up on the high end. Like, these are supposed to be really big, important deals across all districts, but no one's coming. And I heard a lot of, no one knows they exist, no one knew that they happened. And so it's like, unless there's an emphasis on marketing the city and what's going on in it. You're going to continue to have the same weirdos like me showing up, meeting after meeting versus here's what matters. Or maybe they're not, especially the southeast where people are not voting. Voter turnout is so low, unfortunately.
We, we need to leverage more weirdos like you.
Thank God.
I, I mean, truthfully, like truthfully, like we, we can't, we are in this together. We cannot do things alone. The city is the city, but the city is an organization which has, is limited by resources. And then we need to find people, the nicks of the community who are willing to use their platforms, their love for the community to spread more education. And you know, when we talk about those community report outs, I'm really proud to say that, that District Four had one of the highest attendance of, of, of report outs. And, and that's great. And if you look at the report outs, the most well-attended report out was the virtual one. We had like twenty five hundred people on that call.
Well, that's good.
And so, so I get it. We wanna do things in person, but it, it's clear the, the, the community sent a message with all of those report outs. I think there was seven total when you include the virtual one.
Yeah.
The virtual one, head and shoulders participation and attendance. So we need to probably pivot and do more of those type of community engagement to get people involved. And I, I believe fiercely that if you show people you care, you show people you're willing to listen. You show people that you're willing to give them grace and yourself grace. Over time, more people will get involved. But we have this thing of, I invited Nick one time, he didn't show up. I'm never doing it again. No. Invite him forty more times. Invite him twelve more times at least, you know, like keep trying. We are so easy to be like, we didn't get the result we wanted at the time we wanted. I'm done with that. We, that's not how we build community. That's not how we engage our community. You have to keep, you have to keep trying and, and, and not just trying. You have to keep evolving because the way that we communicate is different.
Yeah.
I, I committed to doing a newsletter as, uh, I said that I was gonna do that when I was on the campaign trail. I think I released about four or five of them maybe. And then I realized this isn't working. This isn't, this is informative, but it's not connecting. I'm gonna.
Your analytics.
Um, I pivoted to a Substack and, and that is gonna be an easier way for me to communicate and an easier way for other people to receive information. And if that doesn't work, guess what? I have to evolve and I have to try something else.
Right.
But that's, that's what it's gonna take for, for us. Um, all of this, our entire life is, is a big experiment.
What?
So let's experiment. Let's not be scared of that. Let's be courageous.
I don't know. That sounds kinda scary. I don't know vibes.
Vibes. Oh gosh. But you know, I, I, we, we gotta do it, you know? Courage is not the absence of fear. Courage is doing it anyway. Do it scared, do it broke, do it poor, do it uninformed. Do it without all the resources. Just do it.
So how are you looking forward to the next three years and eight, seven months, eight months you've got left still?
Actually, it is. No, I'm just kidding.
I've got it on my desk. I just crank the wheel and there it is.
Um, you know, I'm just gonna go into this open-minded.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I am spending the rest of this year kind of fleshing out what are, what are the, the big things that I, that I.
What are the big things?
Uh, well, the Southeast Strong Community Plan, right?
Yeah.
Um, and getting more involvement on boards, commissions and committees for Southeast residents. Uh, cause we only have four percent of the, we only make up four percent of, uh, representation for boards, committees and commissions and, um.
As far as like getting applicants in there and stuff like that, yeah.
And then also, um, and then also, uh, community engagement voter turnout. I think, you know, city counselors don't have report cards. I think we should though. Um.
By who? Who would decide that?
I, I think it would be a combination of the city, you know, defining what city counselors should be doing and the residents, right? And I think you could use something like the auditor's office to build a report card.
Apparently I guess doesn't need a CPA anymore. There was a whole controversy around.
She doesn't. She's not, she's not the CFO. She's an auditor and she's an auditor of systems and processes. So.
Guess who's asking good questions about that? It's Dave Donaldson around that, so.
So all to say, city counselors do not have a report card.
Right.
But, um, but if I were to add anything to that report card, it would be that voter turnout at every election is, is increasing. Especially the municipal, uh, voter turnout.
Right.
Every spring election that we have, that number should go, should go up a little bit because that person has built relationship and trust. And you know, I, I have to shout out Yolanda Avila on this, the former city counselor for District Four. Um, we have stayed in close communication since, 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 uh, since I was sworn in. This is important because those projects and stuff that she was working on, they don't end when she, when she stops being a city counselor. It's not like we, we reset the clock and we're like, oh, new plans.
Yeah.
All of these things have already existed. And if we, we owe it to our community, we owe it to our residents to keep the needle moving.
Yeah. So I guess two points on there. Um, when are we getting a moratorium on car washes?
Oh, that's a good question. I've been looking into that actually.
Cause I've seen other cities are like, no, you have to stop.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I've actually, I've, I've been doing some light, um, uh, looking into it. Because I, I use car washes, but I'm, at the same time, I'm like, this is excessive.
Yeah, when they're popping up in every, like between car wash, you have a car wash and a car wash, and then there's a new one that pops up in between, uh, the two of those.
Yeah. I don't have an answer, but I, I, it is, it's on my radar.
Mm-hmm. And I had the other one, but I don't remember.
It's okay.
It's lost.
You know how to reach me.
Yeah, it's true. Um, thank you for coming on our little show.
Thank you.
A little bin though. It's a little show where you go and you listen to it. Uh, where can people reach you? Where can people talk to you? I mean, aside from all the time, John Mikus was in here. He gave his personal phone number.
Gosh, I adore him.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he talked about public banks and stuff like that and the frameworks for that.
Yeah, I adore him.
He would not be administering directly if he were, so just asterisk, 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 you know, like that kinda thing, but no.
Where can people reach me?
You've got a newsletter on Substack.
Yes, so I, um, am, Kimberly is gold on basically every major platform. And then Southeast Strong on basically every major platform. But Southeast Strong, I don't have, and I don't have a, a staff. I don't have a legislative aide. I don't have an admin assistant. I don't have an executive. I have none of this. So Southeast Strong, that's still very much being fleshed out. I'm, I'm hoping to do some crowdfunding to, to help, to help with that.
Yeah.
Um, but Kimberly is gold on, on all platforms. I'm not saying I'm gonna reply tomorrow or even next week.
But you will be one of the sixty seven emails.
I will work hard to, uh, I work really hard to engage. That's, that's really important to me. It literally keeps me up at night that I don't have a better, uh, comms plan.
Oh, well, that's great. Kim, thank you for coming on.
That's great that I'm, it keeps me up at night.
Yeah, it is. It is. Cause it means that you're human.
I am.
And you have a survival instinct.
I'm very flawed.
We're gonna end on that. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. You're the best.
All right. So let's talk about school zones. So let's look at it in a format of problem, solution. What's the problem, uh, with school zones? So school zones, in case you don't know, are twenty mile per hour limited spaces, uh, around schools. So they are where the school meets, uh, a road and then about five hundred feet beyond it or so in each direction. If you're driving down a road, you may see it stenciled into the ground. It'll say school, although it doesn't tell you when a school zone begins or ends, uh, typically, but that's what those stencils are. And I think people either ignore them or get them confused or whatever. But they are twenty mile per hour zones in which you're supposed to go twenty miles per hour, like not twenty five, not thirty and certainly not forty, fifty, sixty, right? And these are during designated areas. The sign, there will be signage, again, something that can easily go overlooked indicating what speed you should be going in these school zones. They are designed to protect kids in transit to school, from school, during school. And in middle school and elementary school, that's a little different. There's usually two zones at the beginning and end of the day, uh, with high schoolers, there's usually the lunch zone in the middle with a little bit of scattering throughout because most high schoolers can go off campus, right? So what's the problem? Well, just behind me, uh, behind my right side here. Uh, a foreign exchange student was killed here two years ago. And that set off a huge response in terms of what is the city doing about school zones and keeping kids safe? Because the schools, the school districts manage the, uh, schools and that. But it's the city that manages the roads themselves, either the construction maintenance or the law enforcement thereof. And so there is a, you know, if, if a road needs to be dieted or something, or a signage needs to be installed or what have you. That's on the city, not the school district. So you have this multi-jurisdictional mess, uh, involved in there. But also you just have the cult, the, the, I'm just adjusting myself here in this little prickly field. You have a problem where people need to adhere to the strict speed limit for the sake of safety. So why is it twenty miles per hour? Well, the studies change a little bit uh, in terms of velocity and stuff like that. But at twenty miles an hour, if a, if a car strikes a, uh, a person, the chances of it being fatal are about five percent. If a car strikes a pedestrian at thirty miles per hour, ten miles per hour or more, the chances of that being a fatal strike increases to forty five percent, almost half. And so mitigating that risk by bringing down school zone, speed during, in school zones is a really big deal. And this is exacerbated by the fact that schools will have littles and they are more likely to suffer a, uh, injury or a fatal blow um, in the event of a pedestrian crash. And of course, this has sprung up around pedestrian health around here. The, uh, rising number of pedestrian deaths in Colorado Springs and El Paso County, right? Even though they aren't specifically in school zones, school zones are where all the eyes are as far as, well, geez, we should be protecting these zones most of all. And the problem gets exacerbated a little bit, but there, bit from there because, and not many people notice. But when I was unemployed for about a year, after being laid off from the indie the second time, I was still freelancing. But I was also a crossing guard at three jurisdictions. Uh, so Doherty here for the Jenkins kids. Uh, at Jenkins, uh, and then at Fremont Elementary down over here. Uh, these, there's high turnover in these roles. They're hard to fill in large part, as you might assume. They are a split shift, so an hour on each end of the day. And then, uh, they don't pay that great. So who signs up for those? It's, it's board spouses, it's, uh, retirees. It is people who don't have a lot else going on during the day. And it is a relatively simple position. The, the role of a crossing guard, in case you don't actually know, which I really didn't know before I started. I mean, yeah, they wear the reflective vests, they help people cross. But the goal of a crossing guard is to enforce the safety of a, of a crosswalk, right? There are designated crosswalks that the district knows about, that the city knows about, where people are supposed to cross. Like you're not supposed to have kids darting out in the middle of the road, uh, even if they think it's clear. Uh, they're supposed to be using the pedestrian facilities, namely the crosswalks to get across. And so the goal of the crossing guard then is to instruct, create this safe zone and then permit passage. So what'll happen is, is that the kids will come up to an intersection, you flag the pedestrian signal. You finally get your ability to cross. And then you, the pedestrians hang out on the corner for a minute while you go out and secure the crosswalk. They stop the cars, they got the sign, the stop sign up. And once they get halfway out, the crossing guard gets halfway out, then they signal people to cross from both ends. Which is a little harder when you're trying to communicate with people on the other side. And so that's the way it's supposed to work. Now, obviously you'll have students that are a little smaralex and they'll be like, yo, I wanna cross with the crossing guard. And my rationale every time that I do that, and sometimes parents will do it with their kids too, is if I'm crossing out there, I would rather be the one who is hit by an errant red light runner, which is what happened here at Doherty, uh, versus, uh, you getting hit. So everyone chill out for just a minute. I'll make sure it's secure. I will create this bubble. People recognize it from all directions. And then you can cross. And then it is on me, it is on the crossing guard to ensure the safety thereof. And that's part of the, uh, procedure. Now, most of the time, the crossing guard sits dormant. They don't have a lot to do. There are only two zones. Uh, an hour each, and even amongst those zones, the peak traffic is usually within about ten, fifteen minutes as kids depart. Uh, it's a little different with high schoolers because they can drive, but also they kinda, just kinda do what they want. And high schoolers don't need, uh, a crossing guard. So there's that jurisdiction there. So you have these multiple problems. And then you also run into, in my experience, whether it's, okay. Let's back, let's establish something here. Doherty and Jenkins High, Jenkins Middle School up the road are built, and even Sand Creek High School out east are basically built along highways. Six lane, straight as an, as, as a nail, highways, freeways essentially. So you have these roads that are built as these high-speed arterials that you have to then slow down, you have to mitigate in order to facilitate safe crossings um, in these zones. And so, but that's part of the equation, but even at Fremont Elementary, in a school that is embedded in the neighborhood, right across from the houses, very bucolic area, um, very tree canopies, you still have parents, you still have pedestrians that are driving through five, ten, fifteen over because they're trying to get places. They're there in a hurry. And so looking at studies in that, you see that the number of people who speed through school zones typically happen more in the morning as like parents are trying to drop their kids off, get to work, stuff like that. Uh, and then it's a little bit less, uh, as you get into the afternoon when things are a little bit more relaxed, the day is done and so on. But often you'd have people who do not understand where a school zone begins. And then they still think that five over is okay. Like, it's not like a highway where you can go five over and you're fine. This is literally, the twenty mile per hour limit is literally tied to the efficacy of safety, to the safety of children, pedestrians in these zones that we're supposed to be like cherishing here. But no, more often not. Parents are just zooming in. I remember one parent had like a Dodge Charger. She would zoom up ten, twenty miles an hour up to the school, past the speed limit. So they're doing thirty, forty at least. And then zoom right back out as loud as they could because it's a frickin' Charger. Of course it is. And as a crossing guard, you're not police, right? Um, you can leave notes for district staff, you can leave notes for teachers because they know the parents, like the crossing guard doesn't know. Uh, they don't have that connection there. I've talked to a lot of parents who would walk their kids back and forth. Um, would, and then it would get confusing, obviously, when parents are just kinda crossing willy-nilly away from the crossing, you know, the crosswalk. But that's neither here nor there. Parents could do what they want. You know, they're the ones who are taking responsibility at that point. It's when you have kids darting across Austin Bluffs. At, uh, you know, during morning rush traffic, that's, those are the kids, like, don't frickin' do that. It's not just because I'm an adult and a staffer who wants you to be safe. I want you to be safe. I don't want you to be squished. But whatever. So we have all these problems. So what's the solution, right? In the past two years, the solution has been to install flashers, which are basically more visible methods of displaying, hey, not only is this a school zone, if you were not aware, but this is the point where you should be doubly aware of, uh, the fact that there's gonna be students, even if you don't see them, like on Barnes, it's very easy to see whether there are, there are students at a glance. Um, and that creates its own problems, like, uh, Barnes in particular here. Not only are people speeding, not only are people making very hazardous right turns on red, not paying attention when pedestrians have the signal. Uh, but there are people using this, basically this highway, uh, and they'll use the inner lane as this kind of giveaway, like they can go any speed they want. It's really weird. It's really weird, uh, the behavior of drivers, uh, in school zones. So so the flashers have been one thing. They've been installed at a few sites. When the incident happened two years ago, they only had a couple in storage. They were like ready to deploy them, but they were running on batteries. So in the case of Doherty here, which is the first one installed, they had battery power for the beginning and then the end phases, but not during lunch. Um, and I believe in the time sense that they've wired them up so that you get the flashers at, on, during all three periods. So good, so good there. But there are tons of school zones where they don't have this kind of enforcement. And even when you're driving into the school zone, those flashers are not like, you know, Vegas or anything. They are little points of light. Um, and there's this hope that maybe there, someone will see it and then they'll bring the, the temperature down, the speed down for everyone else, this kind of peer pressure. Kind of the herd mentality thing. Um, that's kind of, that's the hope, really. It's not a panacea. So you have the flashers in that, uh, you also have incoming red light cameras, speed cameras. Uh, these were authorized by city council last year, or I believe, last year or the year before. And they are very soon going to be deploying a mobile unit to these, to an area like Doherty. They already have enforcement, like you, you will periodically see traffic cops here on bikes, like zooming people down. And the reality, I mean, people say like, oh, it's just enforcement is just a, uh, revenue driver. My God, people. If they put every single traffic cop in town, in front of Doherty, morning, day and night, they would not ever run out of tickets to deliver. Like it is so bad. And again, it's not the five overs, it's the ten overs, it's the fifteen, it's the twenties. It is ridiculous. So as a crossing guard, you are not the cops. You are not there, you're not sitting there with a speeding gun. You can only infer based on how fast people are going. You can't, you know, you're not writing tickets yourself. It's not your job. Your job is to facilitate the safety of the kids, making sure that they can cross, or just kinda anyone who does. Including the resentful high schoolers that are like, why do I need help crossing the street? And it's like, buddy, just let me do my job. Anyway. So you have these solutions, speed cameras and that. Speed cameras have shown, um, to be effective ways to, um, reduce speeds because eventually people realize, oh, I shouldn't be speeding through here. Uh, but when you only have one mobile or even two, heck, even five, ten, mobile speed camera areas or vehicles, that's only covering a small number of jurisdictions. That's only covering a small number of areas. There are schools that have two, three, maybe four roads around them versus Doherty, which is just the one, primarily Barnes, uh, that you have to safeguard, right? At Jenkins, it's, it's Austin Bluffs, right? But at Fremont, there are three crossings. Uh, one on the back end and then two in the front. And so enforcement becomes really hard. So then it's like, okay. You have the thinking that I have is, alright, that's a reactionary response. This thing, this bad thing is happening. We're gonna punish the people who are doing the bad thing. And how effective is that really, right? Like to some extent it is, right? Research is showing. But what about the upstream issues? Uh, what about the built environment? Like the fact that this is built on a frickin' highway? You know, and this happened decades ago. This school is over fifty years old. They're celebrating fifty years this year. I graduated here in O two. Uh, so it was like the twenty-fifth anniversary. So you have these really old schools, uh, that were built along roads that were not highways, that are now highways. And as I understand it, they do have guidelines as to where they put schools, which is namely not on these high-speed arterials, uh, where accidents are more likely not just to occur, but, uh, to be fatal in the event that they do occur. So it's like, okay, so we can't, it, we have guidance for schools that will be built, hopefully. Hopefully that's designed well, but we can't really do a whole lot about the schools that are already built. Oh, I hear you. A person listening or watching this from beyond the, the spectral vision. What if we change the built environment? Like what if we diet these arterials? What if we reduce a lane? Uh, what if we put speed bumps? That's what they did in front of, uh, Russell slash Helen Keller just up the street here. Um, to mitigate speeds there. And I don't know how effective that, that's been. I assume it has been, but they put, um, like one or two speed bumps, speed humps, uh, up in there. That, so that's a solution. But you run into the issue, as I've mentioned a couple of times during this soapbox of, hey, guess what? These school zones only need to be active for two hours a day, five days a week. And then only a number of weeks in a year because kids have the summer off. So what permanent solution do you come up with in that case? Where you go, alright, we're going to permanently alter the arterials here at great expense because altering the built environment is very, very expensive. Austin Bluffs, oh my God, that right in front of Jenkins, that is a high-speed up and like, the, coming down a hill uh, straightaway. Like that is very difficult to mitigate. And that's also a very important arterial for uh, cross-city transit. So then you go even further up. It's like, why did we allow all this urban suburban sprawl to happen? Someone was arguing with me the other day. It's like, well, we shouldn't alienate people who want suburban sprawl. Or they don't want detached, single-family homes. It's like, no, but it can be part of a mix of an urban plan. It doesn't have to be exclusively this thing for as lo- far as the eye can see. Because that's what creates the situations here where you then need a very wide, very straight, very fast arterial to convey the volumes of all of these homes, these detached, single-family homes that are driving out, reaching their collectors, coming to the arterial and then going either way. That necessitates these incredibly dangerous roads is suburban sprawl. That, that, I mean, that's just hand in hand. That is what's caused this issue. Around here in front of me is residences as far as the eye can see, like this way is all residences. Barnes has commercial, like a thin strip of commercial along it, and then it's residences. And so and then that, this carries you out from Austin Bluffs to Powers. So it's a complex issue and this is just one. Even in, uh, elementary schools like Fremont, uh, or even middle schools that aren't aligned right alongside, uh, a freeway, essentially. You do have some options beyond flashers to mitigate that. Put in those speed humps. Diet those lanes. If you go to Gold Hill Mesa, they have these indents where pedestrians can come up an extra lane or so um, to, before they have to cross into traffic or potential traffic. Um, and it's very dieted. It's very calm. The traffic is very calm. So the future really is in dieting traffic, slowing it down. But the cha- the places where it's gonna happen first are gonna be the places where traffic is already low and slow. And that's kinda all you can do because like Barnes here, it's not quite a lost cause, but any dramatic changes, any dramatic solutions are going to be big and they're going to be very expensive. Hit me up with your comments. Send me an email, badlyneededpodcast@gmail.com. Let's go to the credits. How's that sound? Badly needed and long overdue is part of the Studio Eight O Nine Community Podcast Network. These interviews are recorded at Studio Eight O Nine in the Next Us, a professional cooperative environment for small businesses in downtown Colorado Springs. Be sure to check out all the other fine podcasts at studioeighto nine podcasts dot com where you can find your new favorite local podcast. This show is produced by myself and Dave Gardner with video directed by Dave Gardner. Show music is by Injection Site Reaction. Thank you guys. I'd like to give a thank you to Catherine Chukas and Ken Shower. And a special thank you to Kelly Karneski for helping fund this second season of Binlo on Andy Go Go. We have to continue to love our family, love our friends, love our city. And especially in times like these, free Palestine. Alright, let's get out of here.